Okay, we'll call the special formal meeting for January 2nd, 2020 to order. Roll call. Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
Item number two, consider a motion to appoint city clerk as temporary chairperson.
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved by Taylor, seconded by Mims. Item number three, nominations for office of mayor for the city of Iowa City.
I'd like to nominate Pauline Taylor.
I'd like to nominate Susan Mims.
I would like to nominate Bruce Teague.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna, I need a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Okay, and then, so we're gonna vote in order of the nominations and we'll do a roll call. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. We've got a motion to close nominations. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so first nomination was for Pauline Taylor. All those in, oh, we're doing a roll call, sorry.
Typically, we've always, like, allowed people at least comment before we get the vote. I mean, is that, do people want to do that or not? I mean-
Sure. I mean, it's up to the end of the rule.
Right.
That's being nominated.
Yeah. I guess I'll go first, then. Thank you, John, for that nomination. I appreciate that. I've been serving as pro tem for the last two years and have really enjoyed that. And I felt a transition into mayor would go very smoothly from that. I would like to continue the work that we've done over the four years, and I think it's very important to have someone who can continue the progress in the city and work together well with all seven members of the council. Thank you.
Oh, thank everybody for coming this morning. Bruce, you have a good contingent out here, I'm assuming. Glad to see everybody here. We don't usually get this many people to come out for this special meeting. I've served on council for 10 years. Prior to that, I've served on the school board, served as president of the school board, served four years as mayor pro tem. And in that time, and just the time in the city and involvement in those different areas, have a deep depth of knowledge of the issues facing our city. I think we've made a lot of progress in the 10 years that I've been on, and certainly, and I don't mean to say just in those 10 years. I think the city continues to make progress all the time. And as the council changes and we get new personalities and new priorities, we do different things and focus on different issues. And I think we just continue to make progress. But it is the work of all seven people that make those things happen, and I think that's really important. And I think that the addition of different personalities and passions and views is really important. I think I bring that skill set to lead this council and with that background. I'll make a comment just based on some of the conversations I've had with council members. And one of the things that I think, as I've heard people talk to me about, nobody that I've talked to has indicated they don't think I'm very qualified for this position. The issue that I have heard is my temperament. And I will tell you, as a strong, outspoken woman, that bothers me. I think as we try to move forward in this country with more equality, whether it comes with gender or obviously with ethnicity, which is hugely important, to not be able to support people who are strong and outspoken, and particularly women who are strong and outspoken, is really unfortunate. So I hope I will have the support of four councilors today. I think it says a lot in terms of the gender issues. And obviously, everybody can sit here and say, "Well, that means a lot in terms of Bruce, in terms of the ethnicity." And I don't mean to dismiss that at all, because I think that's incredibly important. But when I think you look entirely at somebody's body of work, skill set, and knowledge, I do think I am the most capable of the three. Thank you.
Over the past couple of months, I've had a lot of time to reflect on this very moment. When I look at all of the councilors sitting up here with me today, I see so much your experience, your varied wisdom, passion, and commitment to the community of Iowa City. And I also see the first-ever woman-majority council. So welcome to Councilor Lori, Laura, and Janice. You've made history by making John and me a minority. I know deep in my heart that we all share a vision of how much greater we want this city to become. We want to maintain its greatness but be progressive in order to achieve our city values. The work of this council, I'm proud of, and is inspiring to other communities, not only in Johnson County but across the state, the nation, and the world, like in Sudan where Maz is from. I appreciate this time to speak after I've been nominated for mayor. By being an elected city council member, all of us councilors, we have a right to seek the role as mayor, and I am humbled and grateful for this. Susan and Pauline, I know your love and compassion for this city, and I applaud the work you've done. Thanks to you both. I'm sure we've all, I'm sure we're all very fortunate to be able to seek this role for mayor and share our personal attributes. One of the many skill sets I have is the ability to weave together the talents and the skills of other people in order to reach a team vision. We all know that being mayor amongst us councilors is only a title. It doesn't give power and it does not set any of us above one another. I know this and I respect it. And I respect each of you as my equal. Because together we are strong, and what we do together these next two years, if I so be elected as mayor, will be remembered as a council. Councilors, we're here to keep this community moving forward. Together, our teamwork can move this community forward on our shared values of inclusivity for all. Our teamwork can solidify economic opportunity for all. Our teamwork can lay the foundation for strong financial footings for this generation and future generations. And our teamwork can be an example to our community and beyond. My motto remains, "All voices at the table, even as mayor." I will fulfill this promise. In council meetings, as the leader among equals, I will ensure your voice is heard. I will help to continue to foster positive, productive, and collaborative discussions among us. And when it comes to you, the community, the people who elected me to represent your voice, I want you to know you're always welcome at our council meetings. And I'm willing and eager to meet with every anyone, one-on-one, face-to-face, to share and discuss all matters. Councilors, community members, and city staff, I also need your voice to help me to perform this role successfully if I am privileged with this opportunity. I'm open to discussion, new ideas, and help at times to determine if it's a voice vote or if I need to say, "Roll call, Eleanor." The mayor is the mayor of the city of Iowa City. And as mayor, I can relate to the community at large. 26 years ago, I arrived in Iowa City from Chicago, a 17-year-old high school senior who was failing chemistry and in danger of not graduating. I was in complete shock when I arrived and realized I was not in Kansas anymore. My parents allowed their son, who got all Fs and a C one semester, to move to Iowa City with my 19-year-old sister. Well, many said in the moment, "That was the worst decisions my parents could have ever made." Well, because of Iowa City and my hard work, I graduated from West High in 1994. From my youth, I had built strong relationships within this community. I'm proud to say the people of Iowa City helped develop me into who I am today. I was a person from the inner city of Chicago that statistics might have said I wasn't likely to attend college. Well, I graduated from Kirkwood Community College with my nursing degree and the University of Iowa with a BA in psychology and a certificate in agent studies. Many of you councilors know my story, and of course, I can't tell them all now. But I'm so proud of my journey working with end-of-life patients through Iowa City hospice starting at the age of 19. It was then I realized that patients and their families looked to me, this 19-year-old, as a leader. I quickly discovered the innate gift I had to support others and help them to navigate whatever is going on within their life. 15 years ago, I took the leap of faith to end my job, my paid job, which I loved at Mercy Hospital with good pay and health benefits, to start my own business at Carrying Hands of More. I literally started with no money. My office was in my mobile home, and I had three employees. Carrying Hands of More serves individuals and families with a variety of needs, including children, individuals with disabilities, elderly, and provide end-of-life care for patients. We have assisted over a thousand people to agent place and get services needed in the comfort of their home. I'm proud to say I employ around 90 people mainly living in Iowa City area. It takes a leader, a collaborative leader, to navigate within these past 15 years to have three offices on six of the nine group homes we operate. I want you to take a second to think how the people of Iowa City has helped me achieve these goals. My story, I would hope, gives individuals within this room hope and inspiration, no matter who you are. These past 15 months as an elected city councillor has been awesome and amazing. I've learned a lot. The 500-page packages that seemed to be gibberish now make sense. The reason it makes sense is because of the support of staff, community members, and fellow councilors working with me to ensure their team members succeed it. Every one of you, I give extra praise to Susan Mims for spending so much time with me. After the first time I met with Susan, I knew right away, the 100 hours, no, the 1,000 hours, I spent preparing for this meeting needed to be tripled. I'm happy to say I tripled my study time, and I'm proficient. No Fs and Cs here. I also want to say thanks to Jeff and the city manager, thanks to Jeff, our city manager, and all the staff. Jeff, those 7:30 a.m. weekly meetings, I've enjoyed because it's allowed me to ask the 101 questions I have. It's been 15 months that I've served on council. I feel privileged to, I feel privileged compared to most mayors that get elected, and they start day one with no experience. Our neighbors, University Heights, Corville, and North Liberty, mayors are often people within the community with a desire to serve with little to no institutional knowledge. I have 15 months sitting aside our just-retired mayor, Jim Throgmorden, who also spent significant one-on-one time with me. I quickly learned if I asked one question, I'm gonna get a history lesson, and I soaked it up. Now, being in Iowa City for 26 years, I have practical knowledge through so many interactions with the city. I was on Section 8, and now I'm proud to be able to be the landlord for many affordable houses. So I've known Steve Raskin and many in the department. I've been a renter, and I now own 10 properties. So Steve Laverman, the senior housing inspector, I know well. I also know what property taxes means when it's on our agenda. Prior to the council and since on council, I've had several interactions and witnessed the superb work that Stephanie Bowers does in the Human Rights Department. Tracy Heishu, our neighborhood and development service director, she and past city staff, Steve Long, assisted me with technical support back in the day with my CDBG and home application. I was able to purchase three homes for persons with disabilities to live in because of ACDC and ultimately the council approval of my application. In 2006, I was before council requesting a rezoning that was denied, so I have that scar. Although in that case, I have to say, thank God for unanswered prayers, because the council telling me no was the greatest thing that pushed me toward another level. Chief Mathely and the police department, I've had so many interactions with them through my line of work that I know firsthand their hard work and dedication. I know I told many of you about the firsthand knowledge I gained with the renovation process of Carrying Hands of More Multi-Generational Center. I acted as the developer, the building owner, the general contractor, and boy, did I learn a lot of lessons that I could not have ever learned as a councillor. So thanks to the building inspector, Tim Hennessy, and Terry, and their team, also fire marshal Brian Greer, when I was told I was required to put in a fire sprinkler and it required a large water main pipe, you can believe I learned the city code from a new light. So if you ask me why I want to serve as mayor, I will first tell you I have a servant's heart. I have a humble spirit, and I am not on ego trip. I'm a collaborator and can lead council meetings as an equal. I have institutional knowledge, both as a council member and lived experiences. Then I would tell you, in the community, I will continue to be visibly present as often as possible, because the presence of your mayor means something. My life in Iowa City for 26 years has been intertwined with all people within Iowa City because it's relatable, because I'm relatable to babies and all the way, from babies all the way up to seniors, hey, Bob, in our community. I also have to point out this year would be the 50th celebration of pride, and I'm proud to be a member of the LGBTQ+ community. As mayor, I will give hope to all, no matter what, because I will listen to all voices. And my attributes as a person and as a mayor would be an inspiration to all. We will be the city where the people of Iowa City can say, "I have hope because of this kid with all those Fs and Cs, because if he can strive, so can I." I humbly request your support as mayor.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, so we'll vote in order of the nominations. The first nomination was for Pauline Taylor. Roll call.
Burgess?
No.
Mims?
No.
Salee?
No.
Teague?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
No.
Okay, since we don't have four, we'll move on to the next nomination for Susan Mims. Roll call.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Weiner?
Weiner, I'm sorry. No.
Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, and again, we do not have four, so we'll go to the third nomination for Bruce Teague. Roll call.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Mims?
No.
Okay, and that did not have a majority either. So we go back to nominations?
No, no, we just vote again.
Oh, we just keep voting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion?
Okay, so again, back to Pauline Taylor for mayor. Roll call.
Burgess?
No.
Mims?
No.
Salee?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
No.
Okay, we do not have four, so Susan Mims, the nomination for Susan Mims.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Weiner?
No.
Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, again, we do not have four, so the nomination for Bruce Teague. Roll call.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
No.
Okay, and we do have, one, two, three, four, five, so it's five to two.
So it looks like Bruce, Mr. Teague has it.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, and, I have a sheet of nominations. Now we'll take nominations for the office of mayor pro tem.
Pauline Taylor.
Mazza here, Salee.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, I need a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Teague. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll vote in order of those nominations. So the nomination for Pauline Taylor as mayor pro tem, roll call.
Salee?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Weiner?
No.
Burgess?
No.
Mims?
Yes.
Okay, and we do not have four votes, so we'll, the nomination for Mazzaheer Salee for mayor pro tem, roll call.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
No.
Salee?
Yes.
Okay, five to two, Mazzaheer Salee for the office of mayor pro tem.
Congratulations.
So now we'll go ahead and swear in mayor in mayor pro tem.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And I will faithfully and impartially- And I will faithfully and impartially- To the best of my ability. Discharge the duties- Discharge the duties- Of the office of mayor. Of the office of mayor. In Iowa City, Johnson County, Iowa. In Iowa City, Johnson County, Iowa. As now or here and after. As now and here or after. Required by law. Required by law. I am sorry, Pauline. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my ability- To the best of my ability. Discharge the duties, discharge the duties of the office of mayor pro tem. Of the office of mayor pro tem. In Iowa City, Johnson County, Iowa. As now or here and after. As now and here and after. Required by law. Required by law. Thank you. Congratulations. Here. Oh, that's purple.
And Bruce, it's all yours.
Thanks to everybody for being here today. We really appreciate all of you for coming out to our council meeting. It's an honor. And we're gonna continue with our organizational meeting. Of course, thanks to all my family, love you all. Thanks to you, thanks to you. Congratulations, Mazza here, and again, thanks to Pauline and to the work of Susan Mims. I think we should give them a round of applause. Item number six, consider a motion making two-year city council appointments. Rules committee, we need two. 2018 through 2019, the appointees were Botchway, replaced by Salee, and Taylor. Any discussion? And I can tell you that I did not prepare for today. So this is where that teamwork comes in to help me out.
I think, Mayor Teague, if you just go through each of these, and then we'll keep track of what you decide on, and then you can make, call for one motion to appoint them all.
So then we'll discuss each item as we go along.
We'll start with the rules committee for what you want, what the group wants to do there, and then move to the next one, and then we'll make a motion to approve all those.
Thank you. So thoughts for rules committee, anyone?
I would like to continue.
I would too. I might note, we only met once, but I would continue, that's fine.
Anyone else has any interest? Okay, and you all are taking notes for me. All right, thank you. We'll move on to item B, and this is the emergency management commission. There's one appointee, Thomas.
I would be happy to pass on that particular appointment to anyone who might be interested.
Maybe a good way also is to come back to it once we see the others in terms of kind of balance of who's got what appointments and where we kind of need to fill in. Sometimes that can help.
All right, so we'll come back to that one. C, Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County, the MPOJC, six plus one alternate. Discussion?
It's everybody except you, Bruce. I would agree.
All right, so we're, as always, all right, we got it.
Including Burgess and Weiner.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, and then Iowa City Corville Visitors and Convention Bureau, Throgmorden, so I'm assuming that I'm gonna continue there.
That's always been Weiner.
Yep. And then E is Economic Development Committee. There are three on there now.
I'd like to continue on there, particularly with the, just some continuity with Jim and Rockne were both on there, so I'd like to continue on there.
I would like to be there, too.
I'm also interested in that.
As am I.
Anyone else interested in there? So far, I hear four individuals. So do we want to have discussion here now about this, or kind of go through and come back to it? What are you thinking?
I'm thinking it's important to keep Susan on there with her economic background. She's been very valuable on this committee, and I think with the continuity, it'd be important to keep her on there.
Yeah, I'm interested in serving on that. In my first term, deferred to others to serve on it, partly because I do have a background in planning and zoning as a commissioner of that group. I felt it would be useful to have others have that experience. At this point, with the change of losing Rockne and Jim, you know, I'd like to bring that experience that I have in planning and zoning to that committee.
I really would like to be in there because, you know, I've been really interested in the Economic Development Committee since last time, you know, since I've been elected. And I tried to be there last time, but I guess I've been turned down because I was new, that's what I've been told. And Rockne had to serve more, two years. And I think, being in the council for the last two years, for the past two years, I gained like enough- like enough knowledge now, so I can be with John and Susan. And also, I agree that Susan, she being there, she have experience, and all of us will be new to the Economic Development Committee, and it is preferable that she will be there with us. But I really would like to serve. Last time I was interested, the excuse was I'm new and I don't have experience. Now I do have that experience, and I would love to continue to serve for the, you know, Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
My interest in the Economic Development Committee comes from my background, having a lot of experience, worked in a municipal government for a decade. I've seen the development process from beginning to end. I've been attending these meetings as well and keeping up to speed with it, and just with my professional expertise, that's my interest, and think that's the best fit for my skill set of these committees.
I think one of the things that's important to look at, and since we have to make a decision, I think everybody else should, should feel free to chime in. I think one of the things that we need to look at, and that's why I mentioned, you know, going through, and I think Eleanor did, going through this whole thing before we make a vote, is kind of that balance of responsibilities and making sure that, one, everybody gets an opportunity, and, two, nobody is totally overloaded with things. And I think for me, Maz, with you now having the Mayor Pro Tem position, which I think is a significant one, and I think with, excuse me, with Laura's, you know, background that she has had in there, I would support Laura as the, the third member of the Economic Development Committee.
I really need to respond to that. Last time, you know, Laura, you know, nothing against Laura, I love you Laura, no problem. But, you know, just think about it, the mayor, Jim, you know, Jim himself wasn't that Economic Development Committee. I'm a Pro Tem, and if my position will really make me busy and I cannot serve there, it should have happened to our mayor, because the mayor have a lot of responsibility, and he was on that committee. And second, last time, no one defend me when I said I want to be on this Economic Development Committee, everybody's telling me I'm new. And Susan, you never even stated that, I'm new, it doesn't matter, you know, she can continue, even though she's new. But you kind of agreed with everybody that I'm new. Lola also is new this time, and I think she can wait for the next time, as same thing that I have waited for this since last time.
I agree that Mazaher should, should have a chance, because it, sort of a technical difficulty a couple of years ago, because she was interested and was appointed, and then the mayor changed his mind, because the person that wound up being put on there was not at that meeting, so it was kind of a turn of events that was, was regrettable. So I think that she does deserve a chance to, to be on there this time.
Thank you.
I guess I'll chime in there. This is a very important committee for the, for the council, and I think it's a highly desired committee because of what it represents and the initial conversations that it's having for the economic development of our community. I do know that Laura, your, you know, knowledge and your commitment is commendable. And, you know, we are, you know, faced with three counselors, you know, that has been on council, that wants it. I am very familiar with this story that Maz just shared about her request to wait because she was new, and the council at the time doing that. I do know that, you know, there is no such thing as turns. I believe in that. I think right now, for me, I will support Susan Mims, because I think it's, her presence on there, her knowledge on there has really been outstanding, and I think appropriate, because sometimes I, you know, do worry that counselors don't pay the, don't play the poker face, and they're given, you know, the thumbs up, and then that does affect potentially what the developer does, and then the expectation when it comes to council for votes, if it does move forward. So I have appreciated that with Counselor Mims and the poker face, while having great discussions on the economic development. I think John has also, you know, continuously expressed this desire, and so I will be supporting Mims, John, and Maz on this one. All right. So it sounds like we have so far two for Pauline, two for, or I guess, well, I'm sorry, three for Mims, three for Maz, and probably two or three for John. Do we want to maybe continue to go down the list, or, all right, we'll do that. I was seeing some shaking their heads. All right, so F, Chief Electa Officials Board, Iowa Works, Regional Ten, one position.
Mayor, I would, I would like to request to defer on this item. I'd served on this board the last two years, and at our last meeting, which was like in October, there was discussion that the state rules had changed about the composition of this board, and that, like, local city officials would not be qualified for this any longer, that it would just be the county level, say, the board of supervisors. So I'd like to defer on appointments, so that's how we can find out for sure from those board officials on that.
It sounds like a reasonable request to me, if we need to do further research. Anyone has thoughts about this, deferral request by Pauline?
We had not talked about that, and that's news to me.
Just dawned on me the other day. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Item G, Metro Coalition of Cities, one plus alternate.
That's you.
And that's been, that'll still be the city manager and the mayor, so that is taken care of. Item H, Joint Emergency Communications Center Policy Board, two, and that's been Frue and Mims.
Jeff and I have talked about this, and the, the board has really stabilized over the last few years, and I think we are down to what we would consider very routine work budget. We've got a, there's also a user advisory group that consists of like fire departments and police departments in the area that provide a lot of input on how certain things are done. One of the reasons that we, we started with a staff member on here was the need for more background information in some of these meetings that counselors didn't necessarily have, because we're not involved in that day-to-day work and some of the policy issues. So Jeff came to me just a few weeks ago as we were getting ready for this and said, hey, you know, I think things have settled down, I really don't think that's necessarily the best use of my time, meaning Jeff. And I totally concur with, with Jeff's position on there, on that. So I am very comfortable that we move it to four council members. These are only typically quarterly meetings. I know it lists like six on here, but it's, it's somewhere from four to six meetings a year. They take about an hour typically, from 7:30 to 8:30, maybe nine o'clock. It is out at the JEC facility, which is out just west of West High. I would be willing to continue if nobody else wants that second spot, but I would also be very willing to give it up if two other counselors would like it. I don't think that lack of continuity there would be a problem at all.
Sure.
Yeah, this is something I would be interested in as well.
Anyone else, anyone else has any interest in being on this? All right, look like you're it. Great. And the next item, I, East Central Iowa Council of Governments, one-year appointment and an alternate, so it's been Taylor.
I would be open to anyone else serving on this. It's an excellent board, you get to meet with members of other municipalities and counties, that several counties meet every so often up in Cedar Rapids, but I would rather not continue on it.
This is something else that I would be interested in. I'm very interested in having contact with other cities and the county and the area, and learning a lot more about how everyone interacts and how we can work better together.
I had noted here Janice of interest for this, because I think with her diplomatic background and very used to meeting with people from all backgrounds, I think she would be excellent on this. Does require some travel up to Cedar Rapids, but it's, it's well worth it.
Yeah, it is a very interesting committee. I've served on this before, so you do it. Certainly broadens your horizons with the area.
I think Janice would be excellent.
Seeing no one else interested, I'm assuming? All right, J, Seize Parat Transit Advisory Committee, it's been one, Saleh.
Yeah, unless somebody else wanted, but, you know, I would like, if I'm going to be on the Economic Development Committee, maybe I will defer this to somebody else to take it, but if not, I'm willing to continue.
Okay. Anyone else has interest in Seat Advisory Committee?
I'd be willing to serve on that one as well.
Okay. So we have C, Saleh and Burgess?
No, it'll just be Burgess.
Oh, it just be, okay, all right, great. Item K, UNESCO Board of Directors.
I would be interested in this.
I'm also interested in that one.
Anyone else has interests?
If there's a third position, yes.
There's only one position. So...
I see, okay.
Okay, so just between Burgess and Taylor right now? You want to come back to it? We just, all right. L, Self-Support Non-Voting Representative for Iowa City, that's the city manager designee, so we'll just...
Yeah, we typically handle that, because most of the issues that come up are operational in nature.
All right, awesome. Item M, Johnson County E-911 Service Board, and that is, oh, they're gone, Rar and Matherley. So, and that I continue. And is Iowa City Area Development Board, ICAD, two, and that's been Frue and Thomas.
I think that's an interesting committee, if anyone's interested in that. I'm, you know, this, this gets back into kind of how this all plays out, but I, my primary, my personal primary interest is serving on the Development Committee, but I'm happy to, to pass on my, my role on ICAD.
I'd be interested in ICAD Board if John's not going to serve.
Okay. All right. Anyone else interested? Burgess it is. Item O, Iowa City Assessor Evaluation Committee, that is, it was Botchway, and then I've been on the committees, and I am more than willing to continue on that committee unless there is someone with great interests. Seeing none, it will be me. All right. Item number P, Partnership for Alcohol Safety.
That's you.
And that would be, yes, yes, so. And item number Q, Graduate and Professional Student Government Organization, that's been one, and that's been Mims.
And I've had absolutely no contact from them. So, I mean, I'll continue, but if somebody else wants it, doesn't matter.
I would be willing.
I think you'd need to not, and I just, I'm just saying that from the workload, Bruce. I think when you start looking at the mayor and, and Convention Center, you need to be careful.
All right, all right.
Not that you wouldn't do a great job, I just, you got to be careful, you don't overdo it.
And I think if Susan is willing, I think the, the students have long time recognized her as a member of the council, and I think she would be good.
And I guess I misunderstood, I was thinking that you would happily give it up.
Either one, I mean, if there's somebody else that wants it, I'm happy to give it up. I'm just concerned that you don't overlook yourself.
I appreciate it, thank you. Teamwork. Thank you so much. So anyone else has interest in, in this? Hearing none, well, it's Susan, thank you. And then R is a new board liaison for the Community Police Review Board Liaison, we talked about this. So what are people thinking?
I had initially thought that Laura, with her legal background, would be good for this, but you don't necessarily need to have a legal background, it's just from the discussions on, on establishing this, just someone to be there for the board, a board member to be able to contact and, and talk about issues or things, or concerns. I'm, I'm willing to stand on this.
I defer to Janice.
Okay.
Go ahead, Janice.
Anyone else has an interest? All right, Janice, you're it. So we should probably go back up to the top, and for some of the ones that we don't have figured out, which would be item number B, and that's the Emergency Management Commission. Thomas?
Any other takers on that? All right, I will continue in that.
All right. Great, thank you, John. And then item number E, Economic Development Committee. So where do we want to go with this? We have Mims, Burgess, Saleh, and Thomas.
I think some of the others who haven't spoken need to speak up.
I'm personally supporting Susan. You know, we are in a situation where we're losing all the three existing, so I think, while we have, typically have a policy of rotating after a certain period of time, I think in this case, keeping Susan on is a good idea. And then again, I'm interested in this particular position and would support Mazaher as a third, the third member.
I really just want to say that I have been appointed last time, like, Rockney wasn't in the meeting, and I, I have been appointed. And it was very disappointing to me that next day our mayor wanted me just to step down, because they want Rockney to be there, because Rockney have experience in the council, and I'm new. I guess this is, it wasn't fair, it wasn't okay, but, you know, I just took it. And that's why I really would like to be in this committee this time. I waited, even though I had been appointed, I was present, Rockney wasn't here, but still, I've been asked to step down.
Right now, as I see it, Mims has four total, four supports, which is Pauline, Maz, John, and I guess five, myself. Maz currently has four that I've noted, which is herself, Pauline, me and John. So that is kind of majority there. I think I heard support for John, I didn't take down all the names. Is that what people are sensing?
Yeah, I would, I would support the trio of Susan Mims, John Thomas, and Mazaher Saleh, because I think it would offer us a really broad spectrum of, of experience and points of view, and, and represent the council and the city well.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm hearing nods of heads for Mims, Maz, and John. All right. And we're almost there. K, so it is Taylor or Burgess, what are we thinking?
I would support Laura to go there, to be there.
Yeah, I'll support Laura.
I will as well.
Okay. I'm seeing, I support Laura as well. I'm seeing a majority for Laura, so we will go there. And then we need to take, we're done with all the items on the agenda, we do need to do a, this is going to be a voice vote, is that correct? So we'll need someone to make a motion.
I'll move to approve the committee assignments with the deferral of item F, which will be decided later, once we know the rules.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion passes. Item seven is adjournment. Can I make, will someone make a motion?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? We are adjourned. We are adjourned.